Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the May Finance Committee meeting. I hereby declare the meeting open and call for apologies. I have an apology from councillor Forsyth and an apology from councillor MacPherson, who will be out 15 minutes late. Any further apologies? There being none, I move that apologies be accepted, seconded by councillor Mallot. Those in favour, please say aye. Against, carried. Confirmation of the agenda? I'd like to confirm the agenda, seconded councillor Mallot. Those in favour, please say aye. Against, carried. Declaration of interest? Any declarations of interest? All right. Public forum, there are no speakers that I'm aware of in the public forum today. Item number five are the Finance Committee minutes of the meeting held on Thursday the 23rd of April. Those minutes have been circulated, the open minutes. I will move that those minutes be accepted as a true and correct record.
Yep, okay. Okay, just if you go to page eight, paragraph eight, there are four bullet points. We just wanted the... Sorry, there are five bullet points, correct. Bullet points two, three and four, we just had a discussion, they should be on some sort of action list. So we just...
So my suggestion is that they go on to the action list if they're not covered in today's presentation on the 10-year...
I think the nursery one might be discussed today. The other two, I think, just need to go on to a list.
My recollection, Mr Chair, is the last... The other two that councillor Mallot was referring to were requests from her worship, the mayor, that we looked into those costs as part of the 10-year plan budget. So they will be reported back as part of the 10-year plan budget report back then on the 4th of June.
Okay. So can they go on the action list? Were they saying reported back on the 10-year? Yep, good. Thank you.
So, Mr Chair, the minutes are not entirely accurate because they don't actually say that. So the minutes need to just make that clear. What I asked for was that those budgets be considered as to whether they were appropriate or not, or needed adjusting, when we consider the 10-year plan.
Yes.
Final budget, yeah. So that's not what the minutes are.
So the intent now is to correct that by putting those items on to the action list so that they are picked up in future meetings?
Well, I guess what I'm saying is that the minutes need to say what actually happened. So what they should say on the fourth bullet point was that the unfavorable variance for custom relations, Greg, and it was the unfavorable variance in relation to the budget was questioned, and the CFO was asked to consider that as part of the 10-year plan final budget.
Okay. All right, so will you amend the minutes then? We will amend the minutes?
Sorry, your worship, and should it say and also be added to the action list?
Oh, yeah, I mean, it doesn't have to say, but that's what I would imagine should happen.
But we had it in form of a secret discussion. We had a formal discussion before the meeting.
That's acknowledgement.
Just to decide what is the process, we complete the circle when these things go on, and we're just trying to...
I'm imagining that anything that requires action goes on an action list.
Yeah, but I guess for the poor secretary, she just needs to know, we need to objectively identify this.
I'm not fussed one way or the other. And that also applies to the third bullet point, that the minutes need to record what that was about. The same thing.
Right, so you propose that we amend or we add a...
We'll just add in the words.
Add the words. Okay. All right, so that's done. And these items will all go on the action list? Right. Okay, so I have a seconder for the minutes, councillor Mallot. Those in favour, please say aye. Against, carried. Finance company action list, which won't be up today.
Yeah.
Any items on the action list that require discussion today, that are not currently... that are not otherwise covered in future reports today? None?
If you look up, you'll see my hand raised.
Thank you councillor Gallagher.
Just under the Subcommittee's Chair's report, External Funding and Events Sponsorship Subcommittee's Chair's six-monthed reports to be in the open agenda at the 21st of May. Now, I respect and acknowledge that the Chair of one of those committees is away. Can you just update us from the Chair's point of view of when those...
Those reports are on the agenda, the agenda that we confirmed a few moments ago, and will be reported...
Page 21.
21, 21.
And 20...
Okay, good.
And 19.
Okay.
All right, well, I will move the action list, that the report be received. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Mallot, those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Okay, so we move to item seven, which are the recommended dates for reports to come to finance. I will move that the report be received. Seconder, any discussion? Thank you councillor O'Leary, any discussion? All right, those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Item number eight, which are the six monthly reports from the Chair of the External Funding Committee to the Finance Committee. I'll ask in Margaret's absence, councillor Forsyth's absence, that Lance report to the Chairperson's report. That's on page 19.
Thanks, Mr Chairman, and apologies from councillor Forsyth, she said something come up which was waylaid to her today, so she contacted me and just asked if I could just give a brief overview of this report. Look, I'll take it as read. I think what it's really saying is that there's been good progress made on all our systems and processes around developing revenue generation plans for key projects that are aligned to the Hamilton Plan and council priorities, and then applying for external funding from various sources. Also, we track that, there's a monitoring matrix, which all councillors do have access to that through the report, which is at each of these Subcommittee meetings. So if you aren't a member of that Subcommittee, all elected members do have access to those reports. I'm just bearing in mind that they're generally in public excluded items, mainly for the reason around ensuring that we don't constrict our ability to raise funds from various sources. Quite often, we're applying to a number of different sources for those funds, and just making sure that we don't compromise our opportunities for access and getting those funds. So the report shows that we've secured $1.5 million external funding over the past year. The amount which we'd requested was $13 million, just bearing in mind that a significant part of that was a large application for a key project to do with the restoration project. But you can see there, from the list, there's a tranche of key projects which have attracted external funding, something which the Subcommittee, and I discussed this with councillor Forsyth after the discussion at the previous Finance Committee meeting around transparencing and be able to report publicly around how much money that we have received, et cetera. Something that the Subcommittee probably needs to do is have another discussion when we can give more detail around the amounts that have actually been raised for those certain projects. My view is that if a project is one which has been completed, such as, say, the museum exhibition where it's now in place, there's been council funding towards that, and there's been money raised from outside, that, you know, that sort of information could come outside of the public excluded items that covers information. So my suggestion is that that discussion happens at the Subcommittee, and then that gets reported back through to the Finance Committee to make sure that the members of that Subcommittee are comfortable with that approach. I'll leave it there, Mr Chairman. If councillors want to know the actual amounts for those projects there, that is subject to a public excluded item. I do have a handout which I can give councillors, and there's also that information, the monitoring matrix, which is available to elected members online, and we can circulate that by email.
Thank you. Councillor Gallagher?
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I appreciate why the majority of the work of this Subcommittee is confidential, but of course, it is notified, and the reasons for being confidential is notified, so it's a totally transparent process. Just, and here you say about people's ability to go on the matrix, come in the room if they want, if they have a keen interest. Will you say you successfully secured one and a half million, and you've explained that the $13 million also takes account of a large project? Objectively speaking, do you think this approach has actually, if you like, made us more successful? I don't know. I think it has, but I just want your own objective view, the way of this, you know, I'm looking, I'm trying to measure and evaluate the success of this committee and their approach. I think I know the answer, but...
I think it's been immensely successful that we have a strategic and good methodology to the way that we approach external funding, in that we don't end up competing against ourselves across different areas of the council, so we prioritise, and then we're strategic about where we apply for money and when. So my view is that we have been very successful, remembering its early days with this process over the past nine to 12 months. We do have a whole bunch of other applications and irons in the fire at the moment, and obviously will get reported back through to the Subcommittee and the Finance Committee in the future, so, you know, the proof will be in the pudding.
And I obviously acknowledge that it's the work that happens outside the Subcommittee in terms of those stakeholder relationships, and certainly acknowledge the very excellent Arts Post function and those kind of things, just to, over time, discover and appreciate it, and hold dear some of our lovely philanthropic people who live in the city and organisations. Thank you.
Councillor Mallot? Thanks, Lance. The bullet point, paragraph four, bullet point four, to date successfully secured $1.5 million, we're after about $13 million. Without mentioning any projects in effect, are you reasonably confident that we're on track to get the money we're after? And if not, would the fund... Does the funding fall back to the council, or does the project come back to council for reconsideration?
There's different sizes of projects, obviously. Some of them are, you know, $50,000, some of them are millions of dollars, such as the Hamilton Gardens.
I guess hypothetically speaking, what would be the process?
We're on track. The resolutions around the Hamilton Gardens project is, obviously, you know, we've got the targeted rate, and then we've got a funding programme outside of that which we're working through. If we have to re-scope that because of the funding, then that does have to come back to council. My view at the moment is that we're very much on track, and things are looking good moving forward.
And I know there is some sensitivity about picking out specific projects, so you're reasonably comfortable across the whole portfolio there?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Right, I'll move that the report be received. I have a seconder for that, please, councillor Gallagher. Any discussion? Those in favour, please say aye. Against, carried. Thank you. Item number nine is the six monthly report from the Chair of the Events Sponsorship Subcommittee, Deputy Mayor Chesterman.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm pleased that this report is no longer secret, and that it is an open meeting, and councillors can read that and understand it. In the last application round, we approved an application for the Gallagher Great Race that we've been involved in for, I think, 10 years, and we also approved a small amount for the World Cycling Event that we are still waiting on confirmation, that that event has been won by the Avanti Drone. What that does, it takes from the $222,000-odd dollars that we have allocated in the plan, it takes it down to around $180,000 remaining for the rest of the year. And in previous discussions, we've talked about the importance of supporting the iconic events. Well, in fact, we will only be able to support the iconic events, the three of them. That's the Gardens Festival, the Christmas Trust with the carols, the parade and the tree, and of course balloons over Waikato. So if we proceed with those iconic events at the levels they have had in the past, we will actually be $20,000 overspent. Now, that will mean the Events Committee will have to shave off the $20,000 from those three applications because they are our major events. In point five, there is a recommendation that the council governance structure be amended to remove the Event Sponsorship Subcommittee and put that in the hands of the General Manager, Shaun Murray, on the basis that it seems silly to appoint two external members of the committee and the three councillors attending to adjudicate on three applications that we're really compelled to support. So there is no point. I am considering raising during the 10-year plan hearings the possibility of another $250,000 as an option to closing off the committee. So I'm relaxed about money staying the same. However, I think we would be going backwards, and we've already signalled to one event that this year's application will be the last that we will accept from them. So it's a dilemma for the council to decide to stick to the $222,000, and the committee that I chair will shave off the overspend, because I wouldn't want you coming into my office, sir, and berating me for dealing to the books in this way. So I would be very interested to see any feedback from around the table on that.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Gallagher, question?
Compliments to the Deputy Mayor on his work in this report. I don't know if this is the right forum to discuss, but very clearly, moving forward, my own view is, is I want to sort of tease out of my own head what is the most effective way to use whatever funding we have, and decide to put it in the most effective way. And it may be, you know, and I think, you know, we have an emerging jewel in the Gardens Festival, for example. And why I say emerging jewel, I think it's a jewel that can be further polished and, you know, could literally one day be at what I would call a WOEMAD level. But I'm wondering if the Deputy Mayor, Chair of the committee, would have some idea of, you know, what is the best means, and is this the wrong means to have that kind of discussion? So we get hung up, you know, we're talking about all about funding, but it's actually what the funding, our bit, our kicking in the dough, is designed to get us to, from A to B, and how we do that. And obviously, open to advice, to me, as to what is the most effective means. And what I think I'm hearing is that this committee may or may not be the most effective means to do it.
Yes, thanks, Chair. Councillor Gallagher has raised questions we've been asking ourselves, and talked about WOEMAD, which all of us know about. We all know about the Art Deco Weekend in Napier, for example, which is such a big success. And he raises the point around the Gardens Festival. If we want to reach that higher level because of the overall investment and the additional work at the Gardens, the $80,000 we have previously allocated is woefully inadequate. So if council wants to see a lift in the quality of the Gardens Festival, then I'm suggesting that that might mean an investment of potentially $110,000 or $120,000. So under the current financial restrictions, if you agree with that proposition, do you chop back Christmas and chop back balloons, or does council consider additional funding within the 10-year plan process? So I'm not pushing on it, and certainly we've had an Events Committee for a number of years, and I think it has worked, except for one exception. And, but, the original intention was to set up a fund that would provide seed funding for events to finally get on their own feet, and the objective was a three-year commitment. Now, some of the events that we're funding, like the Gardens Festival, have been going for a very long time. Christmas is a community expectation, but doesn't really deliver on economic outcomes, in my view. And the balloons, because it's fundamentally a lovely event, a free event, you get 25,000-odd people turning up to the university. I'm not sure there's a lot of economic benefit out of that, other than publicity around New Zealand, so Hamilton's a fun place to be. So it may be time to have that discussion at some point about what the Events Committee should be, if there should be one, and what's the level of funding, because I think we need to re-trigger the criteria, the reason for doing this.
And I think, very quickly, committee stage, of course, you know, before we dismember this, or, you know, change this, then that's the kind of focus micro discussion I think we need to have. And it could very well be even around the choices with an X amount of money, and I just have a slight reservation of just delegating that as I read it to staff, and I would like to see more of that, like the staff partnership. But obviously, Mr Chair, totally open mind, and an open mind to receive advice as the way we move forward. And then, I guess, the other issue is taking the ultimate festival, which was the V8s, you know, the huge lessons from that mega festival that came back to bite us. So it's really, it's the when and the how, and what is the legitimate role for local government, and certainly if there's learnings, you know, how did, albeit WOEMAD's part of an international scene, but, you know, how did New Plymouth get that particular event and take the Art Deco one over in the Hawke's Bay, et cetera. So certainly open to further discussion at appropriate time.
If I could just make an additional point, because I agree with what councillor Gallagher is saying. The events market is quite an unusual one and become brutal. For example, all members will know that the Wearable Arts Expo in Nelson was a fantastic New Zealand success story, but Wellington purchased that property from the intellectual property holder and moved it to Wellington. Now, we've had very successful boxing matches here at Flawdlands, also out at Mystery Creek, and of course, we are not holding out $100,000 to the promoter to put in their back pockets. And if you follow boxing, you will see the next two big bouts, one's in Palmerston North, and the other is in Immaculate. And in both cases, those cities have paid to get the events. We are no longer prepared to do that. There may be some commercial arrangements about the facilities, but council cash is not going in to fund the promoter's bottom line.
Where would you like to see this go, Chair of the Subcommittee? I mean, we've got the report be received, there's also the second recommendation, which is the consideration be given to amending the council government structure to improve the event, to remove the Events Sponsorship Subcommittee. Do you want to put that recommendation on to the table, that that be referred back to council, pending presumably the outcome of deliberations in the 10-year plan?
Yeah, I think it should go back to council, because the discussion should be around, should staff just simply control the balance of the budget for three events that we know about? And that will take up all of the allocated funding. Alternatively, should we consider more money in the 10-year plan, and then should we review the purpose of the Events Committee and re-establish what the objectives are? So this is not a slush fund to help groups set up a nice afternoon to learn to swim. This is about, I think, economic benefit to the city. And so what should the criteria around that be? And it's been some time since that was ever discussed, way back to when you've got three years to build your event, and if it didn't build in that time, then council would look to, the Events Committee would look to fund some other product. So I think it should be referred back to council, and while I've suggested removing the structure, I'm still happy to have that slightly wider debate. If there's no more money, then I think that that advice, that resolution would be one I would support. If there is more money, I would support the review.
A review, okay. Councillor Mallot?
No, thank you, Gordon. You just answered the question I was going to ask at the very end there. So just summing up, you saying that the current structure is unnecessary, given the small amount of money it's producing. If this structure is to remain viable, it needs a significant increase, commitment from council in terms of funding through the 10-year plan.
Yeah, and that is the issue about future new potential events. I have no idea what they might be. You don't have to spend the money if the event is not there. But equally, I think there is a challenge to properly fund the Gardens Festival. We are expecting too much from a very small group of volunteers, and from a Chair who has to input very significant hours unpaid for to make this happen. And so I'm just afraid that at $80,000, we will never be a WOEMAD.
All right, well, shall we put the...
Sorry, I just wanted to add to that, that when it does come back for discussion, that it's included, that we could just simply, for those three iconic events, add a budget line into the budget. I mean, that would be personally what I would like to see.
It could be part of the review, couldn't it?
Well, do we really need to have a review? Yet another review? I don't know. That wouldn't be my wish, but I'm just saying...
So you're saying that...
Other cities like Christchurch, for example, their iconic events are simply a budget line, so in an annual plan over 10 years, $100,000 goes to X event.
And the actual events are named?
Yeah.
So the decision is made, so it's...
It's a service level agreement, basically.
Hypothetically, it's...
Basically, it's like that.
It's balloons, gardens, and something else.
So I'd like that included if we're going to...
So you're saying there's no need for the structure of a Subcommittee to do this allocation and oversight?
I don't think this committee's got the power to remove the Subcommittee, so let's move... Can I suggest the motion be that the...
Move the report be received.
Report be received. Do you want the other recommendation to be included?
At this point, I'm preferring more, another more substantive discussion, because if you haven't got the money, then Angela's suggestion of budget items is one way...
So we wait beyond deliberations of the 10-year plan. Okay, so the motion is that the report be received. Thanks, councillor Young. Any discussion? Those in favour, please say aye. Against, carried. Thank you. Item number 10 is the 10-year plan monitoring report. Ask the CFO, Paul Conda, to speak to his report.
Good afternoon, your worship, councillors and Chair. The report this month is a summary report, not the full quarterly report, that the committee receives for March, June, September and December results. Therefore, it is a little bit more abbreviated. Starting with the executive summary at paragraph three, overall, our financial results, both the accounting and balancing the books results, have showed further improvement this month, though the accounting result remains under pressure from the unrealised losses on interest rate swaps and the revaluation to those. As I've noted previously, those are effectively an insurance policy against the interest rates that we would otherwise be exposed to, but when interest rates are lower, the value of swaps becomes depressed, and therefore, there is an unrealised loss that occurs. The debt-to-revenue ratio that's referred to in paragraph seven is based on an estimate for the year-end revenue, as it is an annual measure. If we calculated this on a rolling 12-month basis, then that would actually be 195%. And going forward, as part of the general improvements to the report, we will actually report that on a rolling 12-month basis. The slight increase in the ratio this month reflects the timing of revenue, and also a small increase in the debt as capital expenditure progresses, as we would expect at this time of year. On paragraph 17, you will see a summary of the major variances affecting both the accounting and balancing the books results. We have combined that into one table to make it comparable, so that you can see what significant variances impact on which result. And in both cases, the items such as personnel costs, other expenses, those sort of things impact on both results, whereas vested assets, subsidy on the ring road and the losses from non-cash items being the swaps only impact on the accounting result. As was explained last month, it's important to note that the information that we provide between paragraphs 33 and 66, which is the variances explanations, and then the group of activity summaries on pages 58 to 84, actually look at the variances from two different perspectives. The group of activity summaries report, effectively on the basis of our annual report and our ten-year plan. So that's broken down into the group of activities that we've identified as part of our ten-year plan. Whereas the information in paragraphs 33 to 66 is on the basis of the internal organisational group structures. One of the things that I would like, as I explained last month, this is a test of that approach, we would welcome feedback on that. The variance table is also broken. This is the table at paragraph 18, is broken to subtotals. You'll see there one, which is other expenses, personnel costs, the rates of commercial water, other revenue, et cetera, comes down to a subtotal. Effectively, those are the items that are more controllable by management, whereas development contributions and financial costs, interest rate swaps, those sort of things are things that council has previously identified, does not want to see management taking advantage of to offset cost overruns in other areas. As a result of the forecast that we have come up with as part of the paragraph 23 and the results that we've seen year-to-date, we are expecting to have a favourable overall year-end result and similarly balancing the books surplus. While we usually only provide the risks and opportunities scheduled as part of our monthly reporting, we have included it for this report, as this is the last finance committee meeting of the financial year. And we will also provide a similar report, updated for most current information, to the June Audit and Risk Committee, following a process that was introduced last year by the then CFO to ensure no surprises as we approach year-end. Not all potential capital program deferrals have been reflected on the risks and opportunity schedule, as we work towards finalising the estimates and the impacts that these have on the operating results. We're in the position at the moment where, for example, if you have a 12-month-long project and we're in the middle of that project, then the amount that may swing in or out of the financial year is still being estimated and can be quite small in relative size to the project. For paragraph 19, debt remains positive and reflects our overall good financial performance, the asset sales that we've had over the last little while and the impact of the deferred capital expenditure. Moving to the variances themselves at paragraph 33, as noted, we're achieving an overall improved result. Three groups, including my own, are likely to finish behind budget, and the other five are actually going to finish ahead of budget. I'll now just ask Shaun Murray and then Jason Dawson to comment on their progress towards minimising the impact on the year-end results.
Sorry, just, can you hear me all right?
Yep.
The results for my group overall have an unfavourable outcome, once again, this month, bearing in mind that a little over two-thirds of that shortfall against our budgeted plan relate to the loss of revenue through recent asset sales or property sales. Theatre's revenue remains our biggest concern against its budget, and it's quite a disappointment for us. As I reported last month, I do want to stress, however, that we have put a great deal of work into the theatre's business, but the market is a very, very tough market for us to crack currently. And it's an outcome that's being experienced elsewhere around the country, not that that is an excuse of any sort. We do, however, for the theatre's group, have a lot of savings that correspond to the lack of revenue that's been coming through. Results at Claudeland year-to-date have, once again, we weigh behind budget, but they have been driven largely by some extraordinary costs that we've incurred in staff and legal activity that's been required. We are expecting a very, very strong revenue month for Claudeland's operation in May. The team is very, very busy at present. As a part of our remedial action, however, for Claudeland's to bring the numbers back in line, and we are heading back to be in line with budget, we have reduced a significant amount of our campaign budget activity for the current year. And we also have held open a number of staff roles that have become vacant at the moment. We have around eight staff that have not been replaced. However, they will need to be replaced in due course as we move into a new financial year. Reporting on the zoo, our patronage at the zoo remains slightly ahead of last year. However, once again, that growth hasn't been enough to meet the stretch targets that we put in place to offset costs for the development of the Hamilton Zoo master plan. The economic development area, which includes grants and payments to the likes of the Central City Business Association, Hamilton Work and Culture Tourism and so forth, and other economic development-related projects, that is continuing to run behind plan.
I acknowledge councillor McPherson that you have a question, but we'll follow the format of last month, where we'll let CFO finish his report and then call for questions.
Good, it's a question on that specific...
Yeah, well, we'll come back to that at the end of his report.
Just from the customer relationships group, so the biggest issue that we've had with regards to falling, or going over budget has mainly been in our customer services unit. So we pretty much had a full turnover of staff in the contact centre, which is our call centre at the beginning of the year. So we've had to backfill all of those permanent staff there, so we now are fully staffed. But based on bringing on such a huge number of new staff, obviously, we train them for four weeks before we put them onto building queues, consent queues and lots of other telephone query queues, so they don't need to be trained. So actually, that was where the bubble kind of burst for our customer service unit. What we've done is pretty much held all vacancies. We now have eight open vacancies we've held for the past five months, and hopefully that's targeted to bring us back within budget for the end of financial year.
Thank you, Jason. In the finance group, we have had additional costs associated with the development contributions, long-term plans and backfilling for AX implementation. It's been noted for some time. We continue to seek some efficiencies in legal and consulting costs to offset these. And during the last month, subsequent to this report, we've identified an additional $20,000 worth of savings to help with that issue. Development contributions themselves, on page 30 and paragraph 67, continue to track ahead of budget. And we now expect for the remaining two months, somewhere between three-quarters of a million and a million dollars per month, reflecting the year-end position that we saw last year, excluding a one big-off payment. And the information I have to hand for this month is we're on track for about three-quarters of a million dollars, worth half a million dollars for the month to date. This estimate is reflected into the overall estimate of 12.5 million for the year. Despite significant effort, the capital program continues to fall behind and is now $40 million behind expected levels. As noted in the report previously, some of this relates to the timing of finalising arrangements with third parties, while others result from reduced expenditure due to savings. Deferrals to reflect the timing of projects and some re-prioritisation of expenditure. There have also been some delays in delivery, and some of which are expected to correct before year-end, though some may not. And this is summarised in the schedule on page 57. After allowing for deferrals in the risk and opportunity schedule, the groups are reporting an expected spend of 19.65 over the remainder of the year for capital expenditure. While I do expect an upswing in the last two months of the year, I consider the scales a little bit optimistic. And given that we've been tracking it about $4 million per month year-to-date, to spend $10 million over the last two months, $10 million per month over the last two months, maybe just a little bit optimistic. I'm picking somewhere between $10 and $15 million as CFO. And that has now been reflected into the long-term plan starting position as well. There is going to be an increase in the leave liability in May of approximately $170,000. This follows the identification of an error in reflecting annual leave accrual for staff on maternity or paternity leave under the previous payroll system. Post-implementation processes that follow a new system being introduced identify the error. As part of our ten-year plan finalisation, we are reestimating a number of items, including those items raised at the last meeting, and also depreciation and interest costs to reflect the likely year-end operating capital program positions, so that we can then start the ten-year plan, 2015-25 ten-year plan, from the correct base. As I noted last month, I'd welcome any feedback on the layout of the report ahead of the finalising the layout for the 2015-16 financial reporting, and I'm now happy to take some questions.
Councillor McPherson?
Yes, thanks. Two questions there, one to the, so thank you for making me wait, I've got them to two different managers. The events and economic development group, at the end of the paragraph 50 there, Shaun, you've referred to the lost revenue as a result of the sale of the two properties. Now, I recall distinctly in discussions on our annual plans over the last two years, the former CFO saying, "We're not counting on the sale of any properties in terms of our capital." But this seems to say that we were counting on the income from ones that we knew, and it just, it may not be something you can answer. I'm wondering why our books said we're going to receive income from properties that were up for sale, but weren't, sort of, on the other hand, also counting on potential losses or capital?
For my master chair, I'll take that question as the CFO.
Take it off the CFO, yeah, okay.
Former CFO.
Former.
The assumptions that we use for ten-year planning and annual planning are very clear and very explicit, that we do not make adjustments to the budgets until such time as a sale has occurred. So for, in this case, we had buildings that were intended for sale, but we did not know for sure exactly when they would be sold and what the final impact on the revenue would be in relation to which buildings would not be sold or would be sold during the course of the year. So from that point of view, budgets were not adjusted, and therefore, once those sales occurred, there is no invariance that occurs from that point on. Similarly, going forward with the ten-year plan, the 2015 to 25 ten-year plan, we have not built in any changes around pension and housing and other asset sales that may occur over the course of that ten-year plan, until there is certainty, in which case we'll make those adjustments in annual...
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, I understand what the policy is. I'm talking about common sense here, because the common sense thing would say that you should be conservative in your estimates. If there's a cha... I mean, there was a chance that the properties wouldn't sell, so we didn't, I understand, we didn't count on the capital coming in from that. But equally, if there's a chance that they might sell, why would you count on a whole year's worth of revenue from the lease? It doesn't seem to make good financial planning sense to do that. I understand what you're describing the policy. Yeah, I'm not arguing with what you're describing. I'm saying, is that practice-wise, I guess? And going forward as well?
No, councillor, there are other properties that were on that list for potential sale this year that have not been sold.
Yep, so wouldn't it be better? Yeah, but some have been, and we've counted on the income, from what you're saying and what I'm seeing here, we've counted on the income from the whole, a full 12 months' worth of income from everything, when it's not actually what we achieve. So it puts the books in the red, in that area.
Through you, Mr. Chair, thank you, current CFO, former CFO speaking. Your points are valid. The other aspect to this, there is an offset in terms of the interest upside from selling this. So there's a, when we approach this, it's, you're right, we could be more conservative and suggest that we reduce the revenue. But we do know that if we do sell a property, there will be interest upside associated with the debt reduction from the proceeds from that, not in all cases. And the BNZ was, had a return in the order of eight, seven percent, seven and a half percent? Around eight percent. And our interest, average interest is about 5.6%, so there is a margin there. And it was just at that point in time, when we discussed with councillor, that was the position we ended up on. You're right, we could take a more conservative approach, and that's something we could discuss as part of the ten-year plan.
Yeah, I'm not arguing with the figures, I'm arguing with what it does to our books whenever we sell something that has been earning revenue. And even if there is an upside in terms of no longer having to pay interest on that amount of the value that we eventually sell it for the capital, then surely that should be offset against, say, in this case Shaun's group books?
That would be nice, councillor McPherson.
Well, it's all in the one organisation.
It is. Unfortunately, accounting standards require us to treat interest savings in a certain way, and we've done that in this financial set of, this financial information. So this is an accounting aspect. And when we do talk about those savings, and we did previously, we actually talk about what the net proceeds are, and I think risk and opportunity...
Paragraph 66 actually has a summary table showing that year-to-date and also the year-end estimate, showing that there's a net $400,000 impact. But unfortunately, most of that loss of rental revenue actually sits in Shaun's area at $1.1 million, so overall, $700,000 impact.
It just seems to be not a good practice for, you know, we're not charging enough rates to cover the loss. That's a net loss to this organisation, in terms of our books, and I just find that a strange way to, might be an accountant's way of doing it, but still a strange way of doing it, because we, every time we sell something, we make a loss.
How would you account for it? Because we don't know when it will sell, that's all. You could do it 50/50?
All of our books are estimates.
Yes, that's right, that's right.
So we have to do a, have a method of estimating that takes account of some losses. Not, you know, I'm not saying with lotus, we should discount the whole 12 months, nor should we account for the whole 12 months.
You could say that any properties that are available for sale, we'll make an assumption that at six months, they'll be sold and, you could put a disclosure like that on...
That's what previous...
But it would be no more accurate than anything else.
No, well, historically, you could measure at what point during the year, yeah, the percentage should apply. And you may recall a former CEO, when you were here, well before the current CEO, who used to say that they used to count on expenditure being taken halfway through the year in terms of the cost of the loans. You know, so I'm not trying to change the way we do things, just be a bit more conservative so we don't end up in situations like that. I don't have the exact answer.
Did you have a second question?
Oh, sorry, that was to Jason. Just in relation to the eight staff vacancies that are being held, I was just wondering, because I've had a few complaints and seen it myself, in relation to the teleops, our answers seem to be getting slower in some cases as Vodafone and some of those other organisations. Not quite that bad, that's an exaggeration. But I'm wondering whether the teleops area is fully staffed up, if that's the right word?
I would say what we are moving towards is to try and what we call first call resolution. So we are trying to aim for 75% of calls being resolved through teleops. So we're still training those people to obviously try and meet their target, but I would say we are also doing a resourcing plan for it, because what we have seen is reliance on a lot of the same people to provide that sort of information. So we are looking at that long term. The eight vacancies being held are also not in the call centre, we've held them in other parts of our group.
Okay, no, I was actually referring to the length of time to have someone pick up an answer.
Yes, so we are looking at the resourcing of that, because we currently are not meeting out our call pickup targets.
Thanks.
Councillor Gallagher?
Yeah, I'll start there, actually. I want to deal with 49, 55, 62 and 88. Under 49, in terms of, seems quite a high, unfavorable. Tell us around about the hourly rate and how that might compete with other call centres and the, as much as you can, the morale there, because it's obviously a very high-pressure job.
It is a very high-pressure job, and we did see, we probably weren't paying the same competitive rate. Contact centres are quite competitive here in Hamilton, because we have the energy companies and a lot of the government departments like IRD and EQC are based here. We probably weren't paying market rate initially for our contact centre. So we did see a big drop-off of some of our staff being actually poached, because we did have some very good people there, so they were poached by other call centres. So what we have done is we have re-adressed that by bringing them into market rates as well at the moment, so.
Is there anything else? Because it's a high-pressure...
Martin, could you talk in your...
Yeah, I beg your pardon. It's a high-pressure area, so one of the performance measures will be the personnel management and making people involved with the job, et cetera. Is there anything else that is being addressed? Or was it just the money?
Money was the main thing, but also just the training. Training was another big... part for them, some of them didn't feel confident answering some of the calls, that's why we did spend a lot of time actually taking them out and actually putting them through a very extensive training programme as well, so that's been addressed now as well.
Okay, item 55, management continued to search for new efficiencies, reviews H3, community service, city infrastructure performance groups, this has led to $349,000 in redundancy costs and severance payments. The detail of this item has been reviewed by the Chair and Deputy Chair of the Finance Committee, but as individuals could be identified, the detail is not disclosed in this report, and I respect that, obviously I respect that. Just explain the process, because this is an interesting, again, just, and I think this is very positive, the interaction between, you know, two of our colleagues in this kind of deal, because obviously it's not coming back to the whole board, what did that meeting with the Chair and Deputy Chair involve?
Ollie, do you want to talk to this point?
Ollie and myself briefed the Chair and the Deputy Chair.
Through you, Mr Chair, in response to your question, councillor Gallagher, I provided a table of information of the redundancies and severances made, and from that table had extracted any sense of information, so you could see some information, but nothing that would reveal individuals. So I broke that target down into further parts.
Question to the Chair, what's your take on that, and was there anything, you know, what did that illustrate, and I respect your, I think that's constructive, you should look at that?
Payments are question of fact, I mean, the payments have been made out as part of redundancy or severance, and the explanation from the general manager was that they had followed correct procedures in terms of, in terms of the calculation and negotiating the amounts that were paid.
And you have a com, you're personally very comfortable with the process, in your role as Chair of Finance?
I'm comfortable with the process, no one likes to see these payments and the level of these payments being made, but that's a question, it's a question of the reality of the contract situation here, and the steps being taken.
Right, thank you. Item 62, just a quick point, rates paid, just to clarify that, when it says unfavourable, does that mean, and I apologise, you know, we pay that, because we presumably pay a rate on the zoo, and I'm not sure, you know, how much and where, but, you know, we've got the Arbiterium, the zoo, and our new cemetery, you know, cemetery, those are the obvious properties outside our area, is it, am I missing something, are there other land holdings, or when it says unfavourable, is that just, we have to pay that anyway?
Yeah, we have to pay that anyway, there are a number of properties outside the boundary, and I was provided a list, unfortunately I don't have that with me. The rate-setting process is that both Waikato Regional Council and where those properties are in Waipar and within Waikato District Council, the rate-setting timeframe is very similar to ours, so it does make it difficult to estimate perfectly what the rates are going to be.
Oh, so it was a calculation in terms of planning, so the unfavourable is the difference?
That's right.
Yep. Do we have out of interest any notion of what we do pay for rates, particularly to Waipar and Waikato?
I don't have those figures with me, but I could provide those.
Just out of interest, and rough, just a rough breakdown, because there may be just some ordinary property holdings we have, which are not the reserve.
Can I just interrupt you there, Martin, this is exactly one of those things where someone's asked for a question, and I'm now wondering, well, let's get onto it, a to-do list, oh, yeah, so it's getting on, so, it's just, to be fair to the secretary, sometimes you don't know when, so the Annie, he just needs to know that that is a request to go on to the action list.
Yeah, sure, sure, and that's just on seeking, you know, further information and clarification, which obviously can be circulated to the whole team, clearly. The other issue that I was interested in was the water metre issue, item 88, and that is actually the $186,000 relating to billing delays, where were we at on that, and was that, just give us a wee bit of quick context, I understand you bill, get that.
Through you, Mr Chair, so there's a lot of work gone into that area, so we are catching up, there's a process of the routes that we have to do month by month, by June we get through all of the routes, we've got two more months left to get, at this point in time, we're about $50,000 behind, so it's catching up very quickly and back on to expectations.
Just, I'm trying to, just if you don't mind, explain, you know, you have a consumer...
Yep.
And they don't, they, I read this as they get a late bill, or...
That's correct, so some of the consumers, we had a, quite a substantive update at the last meeting, and something like 10% of our metered consumers, which is about 300 customers, have probably got bills that are, they could expect to get a, normally a bill in for six months' water, a lot of them are getting a bill for 12 months' water, so we've missed one billing period, so it's a delay in the billing period, so it's affecting a small number of customers, but to fix it, we're fixing them as we, the meter reading that we do is broken into about 46 different routes.
Ah, okay, sorry.
And we don't do 46 routes every month.
You're not doing a special call, because that would be a high cost, just as you go out, yeah.
As we're going out and doing the routes, they're done on a six monthly cycle, but it would just be a massive exercise and very disruptive to all of a sudden go and do the 46 routes out of sequence, so the best process is just as their sequence comes up to deal with that 10% problem, but we've been working through that and we're almost right.
And the customers are aware that they may be expecting a bigger bill because of...
Yep, we've had probably issues with about two or three customers that we're talking to, but most of the money has been billed and has been paid in fact, so.
No, thank you.
Councillor Mellott? Thank you, thank you for the other councillors, but somebody answered a couple of questions I was going to ask. Just paragraph six and paragraph 34, do they need to be there? We've discussed these before, they're basically saying, "We work really hard to do as well as we can, we can just take them out, can't we?", "She, we work really hard to do as well as you can."
I'm happy to take your advice, I'm very happy to take them out.
Okay, thank you. Could you just, we talked about the debt-to-revenue ratio before, paragraph seven, what's the quantum of going from 199 to 202%, roughly? Raniel, do you have that figure? I think it was on... Red light comes on.
No, put it again, mate. I'll just sleep now, okay, through you, the Chair, I think the number was around about 5.2 million.
Okay, thank you. Just on paragraph 40, Chris, this is probably you, I think, we talked about wastewater revenue being below budget, and we said why, and then, so tanker waste was prohibited from the wastewater plant? What happened and what was done with it, how was the customers managed?
So this was through the period where we had our biological breakdown of the plant, so it was very important that we controlled what was coming into our plant in terms of the biological processes, so we managed that process by some customers, domestic waste and type, we could still let through, but there are other customers, waste that we just didn't want to take and risk the plant at that time, so they have gone to other waste facilities around the region rather than to our plant.
Do you tanker stuff, do you have tanker stuff?
So these are tankers, so...
Septic tanks and things like, okay.
So they, the Ellen United trucks will come to our plant and they'll dump their load in our plant and pay a fee to dump it in our plant, so that generally that waste is sort of okay, there's other industrial waste or sometimes of unknown sort of constitution, so to take no risks, we haven't accepted that waste and then found other.
So in that situation, did two things happen, because the waste doesn't come to our plant, we miss out on the revenue for it, because they would normally pay, and do we then have to pay the extra cost for sending stuff to Rotorua?
Because it's a private arrangement where they're paying.
So that company allied, whoever you call them, they suffer that cost, do they?
Well, Ellen United is just an example of a company that goes around, they have seven tanks, they charge the customer and then they pay us money to dump it in our waste site, we've got a fees and charges which determine how much they would pay for cube if they know.
So they carry the cost of the fact, instead of going from Hamilton to Pukiti, they go to Hamilton to Rotorua, because that's the closest place, so that's no cost on us?
No.
Okay, is that, okay, that's good, we can get away with that. Paragraph 45, other expenses and personnel costs improved by almost $1 million in a month. Raniel, do you want to come up and explain why that happened?
That is correct, but Raniel has a breakdown for you on that.
Okay, through you, the Chair, breakdown of those variance expenses, the total movement, we, if I take you to page... Paragraph 43, major variances on there, starting from there, we had some savings on our consulting cost on there as well, some savings on our utilities.
But this is a change from March to April?
So, for example, councillor Mellott, if you look at paragraph 57, utilities, there was another $110,000 saving over the course of March to April, so that makes up one tenth of that million dollars in its own right, and that's one of the reasons that we've now put those comparative figures in there, gain consultants and legal costs, you can see there has moved to 1.2 million from 900,000, so we've got those comparatives there for you.
Okay, so what was it, why was it that we suddenly used $100,000 less electricity in one month? Is that what I'm saying, what's that we're saying?
So the phasing for electricity, for example, would be based on what is a regular cycle for cold snaps and those sort of things, April traditionally is a cold snap month, I know that from my experience in the electricity sector, though April this year was in fact not as cold as normal, so that would have impacted on electricity usage. Also, within the water treatment plant, there is savings being made in the utility and electricity costs, as a result of some of the efficiencies they've been able to build in as part of their upgrades and those sort of things.
Okay. Oh, 47, paragraph 47, just the city infrastructure, the group is managing, a second sentence, the group is managing the vacant positions through consultants, so the favourable personnel variance, does that, that doesn't, I understand that doesn't include the impact of the consultants?
That's correct, so that, there is a, within that particular group, there is a small negative consultants variance, overall, though, we are doing well with our consultants budget.
Okay, so, not trying to get a, do a gotcha, but that overstates the favourable personnel variance really, doesn't it, because we haven't taken into the fact that we've...
Yeah, the issue is where the boundary is drawn on personnel costs versus consultants, council has in the past, I understand, asked for details of consultants, they are part of the other operating costs.
But is this a situation where, this is a situation where consultants did the work that we would normally have paid staff to do?
That's correct.
So you'd be more accurate to say that this is our staff, our payroll costs should include the consultants' costs, shouldn't they, in that situation?
Well, yeah, it's a difficult definition issue, because some consultants would not be replacing staff at all, and it's very difficult to pull out as what is sometimes an overall contract for consultants, and then say that portion is about replacing staff and that portion is not, so from an ease of budgeting and accounting, it is not done.
It's just that the comment here is the group is managing the vacant positions through consultants, so that...
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Okay, hang on a second. How many more have you got there, Mr Mellott? Just a couple more. Okay, on, just the activity reports. So page numbers? Sorry, pages, so we no longer got paragraphs, it's pages 58 through 59, Arts and Rec. Now, I know, Shaun gave us a reasonably, you know, an explanation for why this is down, is there any way to improve it?
For this current financial year, no.
Going forward?
Going forward, in the new financial year that we'll be entering into shortly, we have more realistic budgets that are set against our understanding of how the market will perform, so a lot more comfortable about our performance against the budget.
Okay, so, but you're suggesting that next year's budgets will be, so revenue next year will be lower, in line with what, more like what this year's revenue, so we're looking about declining revenue going forward?
It will be much more realistic, yes.
Okay, but you're saying that revenue going forward will decline?
I'm not saying that revenue going forward will decline on actual revenue that we've achieved this year at all, what I'm saying, the budgeted revenue will definitely be down on the budgeted revenue that we had this year.
Okay, and one of your reasons was that people are going from the founders to Claudens?
Yes, correct, through the Chair, we have a number of clients that have basically grown out of the founders' facilities, in terms of the sort of events that they're using, so they have moved across onto Claudens as a result of that, and university graduations are a good example of that.
So it starts to raise questions about founders, doesn't it?
Well, founders theatre is...
Other than just it needs to be renovated, but...
Well, yes it does, but founders theatre is, of course, if you're relating it to those clients that have moved to Claudens, founders is there for theatrical performance, it's just that it's, we've also taken whatever opportunity we can to get other revenue streams happening in that business when we can, such as graduation ceremonies and so forth, so I wouldn't say that the use of the theatre itself is predicated on that type of business that actually moved to Claudens, the type of business that founders does generally would not go to Claudens. Having said that...
But you did say the founders business was going to Claudens?
Yes, I did, but not for performing arts activity, it's for activity that isn't actually core to the founders' purpose.
But you're saying stuff that would have gone to founders in the old days now goes to Claudens?
Correct, but that's not performing arts activity.
Okay, yep. So one more question? And a couple more. The zoo, when we were asked about the strategic plan on the zoo, it was going to be funded from some additional revenue, so someone's failed there, haven't they? Well, something's failed there.
I think we were over optimistic that we'd be able to cover the cost of the Hamilton Zoo master plan through additional revenue, yes I do, however, we've also had real challenges with our expenditure at the zoo as well, which would have been another source for us to overcome that, but we just haven't been able to achieve that this year either.
Okay. The swimming pools, so we're still on the same activity report, overall pool revenue's down on budget, the, you didn't tell us what the actual income was on Club Aqua, how far it's down, but you say somewhere, oh, hang on, Club Aqua, you say the revenue shortfall in Club Aqua is $276,000, about quarter of a million, which is included in and is greater than the overall pools revenue, shortfall of $171, so if it wasn't for the 200, the quarter of a million dollar shortfall in Aqua, the pools wouldn't have had a shortfall?
What paragraph are you on, Gary?
On page 89, 58, 59, and it's, say, on the various explanation panel, if you go down to the one that says pools revenue?
You've got it.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry, where are you going, answer?
Oh, sorry, so you're right, councillor Mellott, there's different, when we talk about pools, it's the whole operation at...
Inclusive of?
Water World and Gallagher's, which includes swimming revenue from people swimming, lane swimming, that sort of thing, there's learn-to-swim programmes, there's the creation, there's also, then there's the gym revenue as well, so when we talk about overall pools, we actually mean the whole function at Water World, but then it's broken into those components, so what you were saying was correct.
All right, thank you. So part of the reason we've got the Club Aqua there, it provides... So part of the reason we've got the Club Aqua there, it provides a good service, but was, one of the big strong selling points is it a major contributor to the income of the pools in Toto?
Yeah, so that part of the business and learn to swim makes an operating profit, which then offsets the cost of the running the facility and the casual swimming, which runs at a large deficit.
But the profit for the, or the revenue for Club Aqua this year thus far is 276,000 below budget?
Below budget, yes, but it's still contributing a profit to the bottom line of the pools to offset the cost of the casual swimming.
The net cash contribution is 159,000. That's recorded in that last sentence.
So that, but it's not, that's not what we, we thought it was going to be bigger than that, do you think?
We thought it was going to be bigger.
Yes, so we're doing better than what, that revised business plan, if you take out the variance against budget, there was that revised business plan and we're actually tracking well against that business plan.
Okay. So memberships increased from 600 to 1,000. So that's a huge, it's a 66% increase in members, numbers for Club Aqua. But it would seem the revenue hasn't increased?
No, so we've got different types, you'll be aware, there's different types of memberships. So we're trialing a whole bunch of different things. We've got some people on historic memberships, which we've got to wait for those to expire, which will be happening over the next eighteen months. And then we can actually move them on to the new membership rate. So it's about moving our historic clients to the new offerings as well as to new clients as well. So we're happy with the numbers, the physical numbers of people, obviously. The bottom line is the key thing moving forward. So we're confident that that will get better as well.
So if membership numbers went up by 66%, did membership revenue go up by 66%?
No, because we're providing different offerings. But we're confident that it will increase more over the next financial year as we wean off the historic contracts on to the new offerings. And we've got a bunch of different offerings, different scenarios of different market segments.
Just one of the concerns is that, and in business like that, when you're selling space, basically, it's very hard to, it's very easy to give things away for free or discounted. It's significantly discounted, you know, mates rate sort of stuff. And I know that has been an issue out there in the past.
We're not doing that now, though. I can give you an assurance of that. So we're working within, you know, the competitive industry and we're getting good advice on that.
Okay, thank you. Museum and library, so we're now on page museum and library.
Fifty-nine?
Fifty-nine, yep. Can you just, why, you've got, explain the overspend on salaries? Museum 54,000 and library 87,000. How does that happen?
One of them's severance. And the libraries was, we went through a market, looking at the staff salaries and we did some market adjustments, which was above what I had in budget. But there had been some historic issues around that, basically to meet what the market's playing for librarians and circulation assistance.
Okay.
We've got some contractual obligations around that and we had to meet those.
Okay, you weren't aware of those when you set your budget or?
We were, but we worked through it. And obviously, you know, we've had to manage budgets in the past, but we've had to be fair to the staff moving through. That we've met those. So it's probably writing something that's been there for a while. Obviously, we've got new staff coming through with attrition and turnover and that sort of thing. And there's been a bit of that in the libraries as well.
Do you do sort of audits of those sort of things?
Yes, yep.
And that was, that founder or was just people saying, look, I'm not getting paid what I should be getting paid?
Some of that. We've also, some of the positions we've actually looked at and some of the new people coming in, we've probably paid them a little bit more than what we're paying the previous incumbent, ensuring that we get good people. But I'm confident that we can manage that within the budget right across my group.
Thank you. Page sixty-two, sixty-three, hang on. You said a couple of questions about four questions ago. I'm quite keen to move, I think a lot of this discussion is micro discussion rather than getting a helicopter view.
Although it's very entertaining.
I'm sure, I'm sure this... Well, I just see, how micro is this? Shaun, what's Claudons going to result, going to be the end of this year?
As I reported last meeting, just under 10 million as budgeted.
Look at that.
So we're still on track for that? Nothing, it's, yep. And just one last one. We're talking about a nursery review, because the nursery's got a whole lot of... What is the goal of the nursery review?
Essentially to assess the viability of the nursery and explore the options available to council going forward. So we've had Price Waterhouse Coopers working with a nursery consultant on that. The draft report's just about finished and then we will be briefing councils on that at a briefing and then that can be incorporated into the LTP finalization discussions about where we go with the nursery in the future. Remembering that's an internal business.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That is really about saving the council money rather than making money.
It's about producing trees that council would have had to buy from someone else.
Yeah, that are cost effective and we get them when we need them.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions before I put recommendation?
The CFO wanted some feedback on the report. I personally liked it. It was easy to understand where each of the activities of council was. Very quick, factual numbers and didn't explode my brain. I found it very easy information to digest, so thank you. And just one, I know it's been noted in the safety plan monitoring, but just want to make sure on point fifty-eight around there that there is budget there, budget savings for security. And we know that the Ministry of Justice is pulling funding for City Safe. So there's obviously an opportunity there, not that it's a great opportunity. Government shouldn't be pulling away from things like that, safety of our citizens, but just adding another comment around that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. I'll move that, sorry. Question, yes?
Lance, on page fifty-nine, you've got salaries for the pool over the summer due to a warmer summer than you expected, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars increase. I mean, we know there's a staff increase over summer anyway, there must be. But a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars increase over a three-month period?
I put on more senior lifeguards because we had some behavioral issues happening at the pool. And for health and safety reasons, I made the call to put on more senior staff for that period.
How many more?
Four.
So it costs a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for three months to put four staff on?
That's not the only reason, but that's most of it. But you've got to talk about rosters. There's two rosters each day because remember the pools are open quite a significant period of time.
Are there any vacancies down there for senior lifeguards? That's a lot of money.
If you work it out over the period, it's...
Three-month period, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Four staff.
Well, four times two because you've got two, you've got two rosters each day, so.
Eight staff, seven days a week.
Yep.
So you're saying eight staff, not four?
Yeah.
Eight staff per day, seven days a week.
I'll give you the breakdown if you want it offline.
And last time we talked, a year's membership for the gym was a thousand dollars. Last time you presented and you said that you were going to come into line with market rates because that was an absolute bargain. You have increased them above that level.
I'm not sure if I quoted that figure. I can't recall.
Oh, no, that was a figure at the time.
I can't recall what the figure was. I'm sorry, I'll check that. I don't think I said it was a thousand dollars, though.
No, it was a thousand dollars.
Right. So we've now got a, we've now got a variety of offerings, more in line with what the industry does. So like three monthly memberships, six monthly, yearly, et cetera, et cetera. Because the market's moving quite differently very quickly, so we have to adjust to that as well.
I just don't think there's another gym in town that you can join that's cheap. So I don't think that's market rating. They weren't market values at the time. I'll check that out. Chris, I just see on... Abatements to the Claudons Bridge. And there's a figure there on...
Abutments?
Abutment, yeah. Was that, was that to do with the slips or was this a different issue? A hundred and seventy-one thousand?
It's to do with the slips that occurred at the time of the cycling crack open. It identified risk to the Claudons Bridge. And so we came to council and got approval to soil and ale and tie the abatement back into the bridge.
So that was the walkway which could have affected the bridge?
The walkway was adjacent to it. But it was identified at the same time. So Lance and his team fixed the walkway and me and my team fixed the bridge.
So you got the NZTA subsidy. Did the other slip get the subsidy as well? Both slips did?
Yep.
Yes, yes, and Waikato Regional Council subsidy.
Yep.
So we've made a saving on that project.
Thank you. Just rich it on the fixing the interest rates. So I see the weighted average is eight point, five point eight two. And you've got nearly 90% fixed. Over what sort of term is it fixed?
Oh, no, I don't have the current information. I'll ask, see if I'd ask that question.
The ratio of fixed to floating varies across each year. There is a range for one to three years and then five through to 10. And so those ranges, we stay within those ranges. I think towards the beginning of that three-year period, it's around about 80% and it drops down to around about 15% towards the end of the 10-year period. So it is, it varies over that time.
Okay. And you work with an external accountant?
That's correct. We have Price Waterhouse Coopers as our treasury advisors and they give us advice on where that range should be and then also where we should sit within that range, given what the market is doing at any particular time.
Yep. And there, obviously you're aware that the market's weakening again. Obviously, you're aware the market's weakening again.
That's correct, yes. In fact, we've been able to extend some of our swaps towards the end of that 10-year period and take on a little bit more based on those very excellent, or excellent long-term rates that are currently being offered, which should result in council having some advantage going forward.
On page twenty-six, the graph at the top there, why has council been presented with a graph showing an extra 100 million dollars in city debt above the long-term plan, above the current long-term plan?
It's clearly noted that that is the proposed 10-year plan. Reads 2015 to 25.
So does that mean that staff consider that it's inevitable that the 10-year plan's going to increase city debt by 100 million dollars?
Not at all, but given that we're producing this graph on an almost daily basis at the moment, it made it easier to have one single graph.
But the current plan doesn't show 100 million dollars in increased debt. The current plan shows the debt coming down, not going up. Why aren't you using the current, we're not under that plan. We're under, the current plan isn't the plan you've shown.
I agree it is not and we'll make sure that's corrected going forward. And we can produce that for you if you would like.
Do staff think it's inevitable that we're going, we're going with an increase in 100 million dollars? Is that why you put it in there?
No, not at all. As I said, we, as I have already said, we were using this graph on a daily basis to do presentations and various other things for the ease of not having to swap figures in and out of it all of the time. Obviously, the wrong graph has been put in here. I apologize for that and we will correct it going forward and we'll circulate it to council.
It just seems that staff feel the outcome's inevitable if you're going to put in the next 10-year plan ahead of the current 10-year plan.
I'm sorry if we gave that impression. That is not how we understand it. I mean, that is council's call ultimately when it approves the long-term plan.
So next time we're presented with figures, you'll have the current plan in there?
Yes. It is correctly labeled though, councillor, as the proposed 10-year plan.
We've got three choices of a proposed 10-year plan, Rob. And what I'm heading here is that it appears staff think it's inevitable, the finance staff, that we're going with something ahead of time.
Mr. Chair, I think the CFO has made it clear that the right graph to include there is the current 10-year plan graph and that he's made the offer to circulate that. Staff do not hold a view until such time as council makes a resolution to adopt the 10-year plan as to what the new 10-year plan debt figures or any other figures will be.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? All right, well, I will put the recommendation that, let me go back to it again. Recommendation on paragraph nine, that the report and the risk and opportunity schedule be received. Do I have a second, please?
We have, it's a note that the, that graph is going to be also recommended.
Happy to do that. Happy for the CFO to circulate, do you want to circulate to elected members?
Yes, I'll get that amended graph circulated.
After this meeting and then, and then...
Just a note, the note in the minutes is for the purpose of saying, well, that is the correct graph.
And that will be used in future.
So if I could change the recommendation to recommendation from management that the report amended for the graphs on page twenty-six. 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 And the risks and opportunities scheduled be received.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, councillor. Any discussion on the motion? Could I just perhaps just give a helicopter view? I know we've got into a certain amount of micro detail in today's discussion, but the results for the 10 months, particularly around balancing the books and the financial strategy are very pleasing. And I think it's important to record the efforts of all across the organization in achieving to date a better-than-budget result. And let's hope that we can land in the right spot in two months' time at the end of June. So the next two months through to June are obviously going to be critical in order to give us a better-than-expected result. So no further discussion. Those in favor, that the recommendation be received. Those in favor, please say aye. Against, carried. Thank you. Next item is item 11, which is the key projects report. Welcome to Carol Blair. Take the report as read?
Yes.
Do you have any comments or?
Happy to take questions through the chair.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, there being none, I will put the motion, a recommendation from management that the report be received. Do I have a second, please?
A second.
Thank you, councillor Wilson. Any discussion?
I just have a discussion point. I have raised it with you, Chair, about the shortened report on the project monitoring. And I think I passed on your comments that, well, I certainly want brevity. I think there are some key facts or key indicators missing that I'd like to see in the report. Doesn't need to be recorded or anything, but I do think that the total amount of the budget and, you know, commence and end date, et cetera, do need to be included in this. And that would still enable it to be fitted on one page. But I think they are key matters of importance. And so I'd like to ask you to have another go at this thing.
Yeah, thank you for that, Your Worship. I have sent across to Carol and the team what my, what our understanding was from an earlier meeting of what, how the template would look. Done that in the last few days and the intention is that we'll get our heads together after this meeting and see if we can get something which, which fits, fits around simplifying and making perhaps the report, which is on page eighty-nine, a little more easy for elected members to read and understand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I've put the motion...
Earlier meeting, that was here, wasn't it? We had it here.
That was, no, that was a meeting we had following the last report from the PMO about how we might, how we might amend this template that we've got in terms of making the PMO reports of work that is being monitored by the project management officer a little easier for us to read and understand.
Was that here? Was, where was that meeting?
It was a discussion at an earlier finance meeting.
Here?
Yeah, I'm sure it was here.
Here, okay. No, no, that's good, that's good.
Okay, so we have the motion that the report be received. Those in favour, please say aye, against, carried. Item number twelve, which is the update of the investment and liability management policy. Brett?
Brett, do you want to come to the table Brett? This is a policy that's required to be held by council at all times. It is part of the process to review it during the course of the ten-year plan and that review has now been completed. We have at the table to answer questions Brett Brinkworth and also our PWC advisor Stuart Henderson, so welcome.
Welcome Stuart. Okay, well I'll take the report as read. Questions councillor O'Leary?
Thank you. The policy that's in here is the new policy being proposed. There's no track changes on here, I didn't have time to compare old with new, so I need a verbal update on exactly what the updates and the changes are without me having to read side by side, which I didn't have time to do. So can someone do that for me?
Brett, do you want to?
What are the differences with the current policy?
So the major differences to me are we've inserted the borrowing limits for the LGFA as well as HCC's limits, we get to comply with both those limits.
You have instituted them?
Yeah, so there's a table on the...
Page ninety-six.
So item seven point one, under borrowing limits, there's a table there, it's got HCC limits and LGFA limits.
Normally the LGFA limits would be the only ones that reflect it, but council has its own financial strategy and we felt it was appropriate that those also be reflected into the document.
We've also broken down the fixed to floating mix of interest rate maturities. It used to be in three buckets from one to three years, three to five years and five years plus. And we've now broken that down to annual, annual limits.
I might add that the big change there is that you used to manage your interest rate risk based off a twelve-month forecast figure. And really what this has now done is taken it more to when you produce your LTP and you're actually looking out there with debt forecasts going out ten years. And it gives you a greater degree of flexibility in being able to forward and manage that interest rate risk. And that's been, that's been the key change. Just moving away from a single, single point in time forecast figure to one that actually moves through in conjunction with council's plans.
Councillor O'Leary, I've also noted your request that next time there'll be track changes on all these policies. My apologies, I was unaware of that process.
Yeah, that's good because we do ask that one a lot.
Unfortunately, I was unaware of that.
I thought that was pretty much organisational wide that we did that.
Yeah, we always ask for that, yeah. Chair, perhaps the consequential meaning of moving from annual to coincide with the three-year budget, fit explanation about why and how does that impact on us or why have you done that?
Okay, so in terms of what we've been noticing, we advise about ninety percent of the debt issued by councils in New Zealand, a large number of the high-growth councils, these are councils that are projecting quite significant rises in debt, have been limited in being able to make decisions around that debt ahead of time in terms of being able to manage and forward manage, especially for budget purposes, when you're looking at, certainly around LTPs where you're looking to get confidence around figures coming through to you from management around projected interest rate costs, because that all feeds in quite clearly into your plans and determining how much you've got available to spend and how much you may need to consider to rate going forward. So the original policy met a more static figure, we would say, generally projecting out only twelve months in terms of being able to manage that from an interest rate risk perspective. This is, this change, which has been implemented by a number of, probably most of the larger councils now, so we're seeing Christchurch implement it, we're seeing Auckland implement it, Greater Wellington, Wellington's just looking at it now, HUT have implemented it. It's really, it's about being able to move the policy in conjunction with the changing dynamics of councils and council debt. So hopefully that, I hope that maybe gives some answer to why there's been a change. It's to stop you really having one hand tied behind your back in terms of looking forward and being able to forward manage the risks that you're looking at.
Councillor Mellott?
Just going back to the, just going back to investment policy, objective one point one, second bullet point, ensure the investments benefit the council's ratepayers. Now that seems to be a bit inconsistent with paragraph four, investment mix, four point three, the last sentence in that paragraph, equity investments may be held where council considers there to be strategic community value. What I'm doing is drawing the difference between ratepayers and citizens, I guess. So who, this thing I assume is required by legislation or something or it's just proven to do, but ratepayers and citizens are frequently not the same people? Or residents, maybe residents is the right word? Is there a deliberate reason why we've said ratepayers some places, other times we're trying to benefit the community? Who is the beneficiary of this policy? I'm just trying to get my head around that question actually. Well, just the objectives, I guess you're trying to protect the council's ratepayers, so that's very clear who you're talking about. Then over here, equity investments are supposed to be of strategic community value.
Yeah, and that may well be councillor Mellott, I've just given my head around it now that, for example, we may well have had our investment in the airport, which is an equity investment, as I understand Paul, is still an equity investment for the economic benefit of a broader community, so that's part of the driving of that technology, it's probably two distinct groups. From an investment in a debt management point of view, we do that to ensure the lowest cost possible, but we have some other investments, e.g. the airport, which don't actually provide dividend return but provide other returns in the form of other benefits to the broader community. Yeah, so that's the distinction.
So would that contradict then, because it's a very, very long stretch to think that ratepayers benefit from our investment in the airport?
Yeah, and I think...
So does that contradict our, you know, our primary focus, which is the objectives?
I don't think it does contradict, I think it states that our principle is that we will attempt to, well, we will ensure that investments benefit the council's ratepayers. There's always the question, and I think it's a question that will probably challenge you through your subcommittee as well, is what is the best holding of our other investments and what can we better use our funds for? So I think it's mutually exclusive. This policy is not about whether we sell or keep our equity investments. So that's the distinction I see it.
Yeah, I guess when something's right up front in the objectives, now that's like the principles the whole thing's based on, the rest, and then you get down into more concrete details down here. It just seems to me that those two contradict because, I mean, the community is not ratepayers.
Further questions? One question I've got is on the table on seven point one, where we use total overall debt to total revenue and set that to fifty percent or less than two fifty, and LGFA have net debt. Is there a reason why we haven't harmonised, either us or LGFA haven't harmonised with us, to have it on one single line where we're both talking about the same, the same amount, particularly if net debt is different to total debt? Or is it just a choice of words?
So the difference is that the total overall debt includes the cashback reserves being added back, so from that perspective it is a more conservative position that council takes as part of that, then the net debt position that the LGFA takes.
Well, I would have thought net would have always been less than total overall, I would have thought it was the other way around.
Net, LGFA and most other councils work off an LGFA format, which is the net debt to total revenue, it's always been my understanding and probably it came in, I think probably three or four years ago with this council, this council wanted to take a more conservative element to it.
Okay.
So in that sense, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a council's...
A council decision?
Decision, not, not, and certainly we haven't made, I mean, we've made comment on it a number of times to say, oh, that's pretty conservative, you've got the LGFA which broadly is sector-wide and is fairly harmonious sector-wide, but as I say, that's your prerogative.
Okay. All right. Councillor Mellott?
Just one other thing, in the definitions of revenue, you've got, I see, I say that vested assets, capital subsidies etcetera, we've got interest rate swaps. When they improve, are they considered revenue for the purposes of this?
No.
It just needs to be, well, they're not?
No.
So we should overtly say they exclude that, shouldn't we? Because we have them in our accounts and they're a dirty great big figure.
From an accounting point of view, they're not disclosed as revenue, they're treated as a movement in interest rate swaps at the bottom of the financial statements, so from a true accounting definition, you can challenge me on the true accounting definition, they're a gain and a loss, but they're not treated as part of our revenue set in our disclosures of our financial statement.
So in standard accounting policy, they're not considered a revenue or an expense?
No.
Okay, all right.
All right, let's then move to the recommendations, the recommendation that the report be received.
Can I just ask another question, sorry, Chair? So are there any other changes that you've made to this policy?
One other one is it allows for pre-funding of debt maturities.
Can you give us a reference where this?
The paragraph what and what are the words that have changed?
Eleven point one five, second bullet point, on page ninety-nine of the agenda. Is that what you're talking to Brett? Council has the ability to pre-fund up to eighteen months forecast debt requirements, including refinancings.
Yes.
Why was that changed?
That just gives flexibility, we've got other councils that are implementing that as well, just so that it's being stated that they can do it. And that's to enable you to choose your timing when it comes to funding. We've got, we have situations out there where long-term funding and credit spreads are at historical lows, we've got local government funding agency issuing twelve-year bonds, gives you the opportunity to look forward and say, we would like to lock down some certainty now in six months, nine months ahead of requiring those funds, but we can do that and it enables us, well, enables you to have that bit of flexibility and certainty, rather than wait, having that timing imposed on you when you come to doing the financing or the refinancing.
Okay, to take advantage of the market.
It's really to enable you to manage it.
Yeah, okay. What other changes have been made?
Sorry, Julie, can I just expand on that particular one? Why couldn't our old, presumably our old policy was silent on that, was it?
This is to make it clear, so that you're seeing upfront.
But once you say, once you put eighteen months, that means like it's no more than eighteen months. The old policy, I assume, had nothing about this and so it didn't say you couldn't do it?
Yeah, the old policy was...
Prudent not to go any further than eighteen months.
The old policy was silent on this matter and the other constraint was the old policy didn't allow us to invest the cash from raising the loan to more than ninety days at a time. And this policy allows us to invest the cash up to the maturity of the debt pre-funding.
So in other words, we could in fact go out, borrow additionally eighteen months ahead of the major projects so that we can secure the funds.
Just to be clear, you've got a liability, you know, that's coming at eighteen months?
Yep.
You decide, we'll get into it now and buy the, borrow the money now, like borrow it and start paying interest on it now?
And invest it over a...
And invest it in somewhere else to try and recoup some of that interest?
Can I just listen to the CFO, thanks? So could you just explain what you were going to say, I think?
So it's giving permission for us to actually borrow, pre-fund a project and do that up to eighteen months in advance, take advantage of LGFA borrowing dates and also the tranches that they may be doing and the interest rates that are advantageous at the same time. And it is also allowing us to invest that money up to the same period, eighteen months ahead. It will be a rarity when that is used because obviously there will be a small margin between what we can invest it in and what we can presumably borrow it at, but at the same time it would allow us also to reduce our commercial paper levels and those sort of things for that period of time as well. So we would be able to affect our debt mix as well over that period of time by securing a more advantageous rate ahead of time. It should be a rarity, but it is an important permission that best practice says that we should have.
Have we captured now all the changes or, I'm sort of getting the feeling that maybe we should be looking at a tract, a tract policy so that we know exactly what, exactly what all of the changes are that have been made to the old policy before we recommend that the new policy be adopted?
Certainly in terms of the work that we did around the liability and investment policy and the areas that we looked at in terms of recommended changes, these have captured the material changes that have been discussed. We haven't made any points around equity investments, that's kind of outside. The other, there has been no other change in terms of the key liabilities policy that we're aware of, but I do have the, I mean, I can get the marked up.
So maybe Mr. Chair, I can suggest that we circulate the marked up change ahead of it being finally approved at the council meeting. This is a recommendation.
The next finance meeting or?
This is a recommendation to the council and is required to be adopted in time for thirty June in line with the ten-year plan.
But we can adopt this as part of the council meetings in the ten-year plan?
Yes.
So Chair, I want to see a marked up change.
Okay, yeah, I think that seems to be one of the outcomes. So let's have the report be received and if you could circulate to us a copy of the tracked version. And do that over the next, the next few days so that we've got that in plenty of time for discussion. You're suggesting at the deliberation, at the hearing?
I don't know, in a meeting for the ten-year plan, we can sign it all off, right?
Okay. Thank you. All right, well, so the motion now is just a, that the report be received. Do I have a second to for that please? Thank you councillor, Deputy Mayor Chesterman. Those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Next report, again with Brett and Stuart, is the proposed amendments to the New Zealand Local Government Funding Agency and that's on page one hundred and one. Take the report as read. Do you, any comments that you wish to present to us that are not otherwise in the report? Prior to the questions?
Mr. Chair, if I may, this just reflects an introduction to the... Mr. Chair, if I may, this just reflects a, uh, introduction to Financial Markets Conduct Act. Uh, there are a couple of permissions that we've been using previously that we'd like to continue to use. And those are reflected into the amendments that Simpson-Greerson have provided to the sector. I have a full copy of the amended documents here, um, so whether or not anyone wants to read through those in detail. Um, Stuart has been through those as well, um, in detail and Simpson-Greerson has done the advice on behalf of the sector.
Councillor O'Leary.
So just a question on that, because that's what I raced straight down to, that the documents will be circulated at the meeting. Um, that is an agreement between us and our, and the funding agency?
That's correct.
So the agreement has changed?
The agreements have changed.
Yep.
Uh, five documents in total.
And, um, you, we could be supplied with track changes of the material changes to that agreement? This is a council agreement that we're signing off on? I'm not happy that I haven't seen that.
Uh, we would have, uh.
We have to re-sign it, don't we?
We do have to re-sign it, yes. Um, I'm sure we could obtain the track changes through Simpson-Greerson.
Um, the second thing is, uh, I mean, I'm, I'm happy with it, with the changes. I've always actually been a little bit uncomfortable when we started, um, discussions early on about this agency about us having to, um, pick up eighty percent of our, um, of our debt through them. Um, but yeah, I have a problem with not citing the changes for myself.
Um, can I just, um, through you, Mr. Chair, the way that the appendix on page one oh four, one oh five and one oh six effectively states in the context of the changes required for those documents? So I suggest the way forward is the original document and that reading conjunction with these two, three pages will provide clarity as to what the changes are and, um, be able to clarify those without the need to obtain the track changes version.
So you're suggesting the best option is to, to distribute the original agreement?
Um, or make it, or, yeah, the original agreement and reading conjunction with these actually highlights what those changes are, because this is written in, in the context of the changes.
So, sorry, I don't mean to be difficult, I really don't. But why can't, um, why can't we then be given an electronic copy of the agreement with the, with the changes noted on that document? So we can see really, really clearly what's going on? Why can't we have that?
Oh, you can have that, I was just explaining that this document's been written in the context of those changes and I thought it was reasonably, um, straightforward. But I agree, if that's what councils want, we can get a copy.
It might not be what they want, but that's what I would like.
What's the general feeling? Um, one, we can distribute, I, I, I take it there are two options. One is to get the tracked, tracked changes and the second one is to get the original agreement and match the changes that are in the Simpson-Greerson three-page summary of the changes that.
I mean, the original agreement came into an agenda at one point, didn't it?
Some, sometimes, I mean, we didn't do this, sometimes it's not suitable to provide a track change because sometimes it wasn't done as a track change. Um, I, I mean, I, I don't know how different this is than the original, but it may not be practical to get a track change.
I think that's what you're suggesting, that maybe, it may.
Yeah, and I think that's reason, councillor King, that they've structured in their advice in such a way as to talk about remove this clause, add that clause and use the instructions in this document because of that. And we don't have the, we didn't receive the track changes version, we received this document that you see in front of you plus the document that the CFO has in front of him, which is the ended up final document. Um, but we can ask the question whether it's available, I'm not so sure whether or not, um, Stuart, you've seen a copy of the track changed version?
Not track changes, we've really gone through just the key material, um, differences which have been articulated pretty well by Simpson-Greerson. And, uh, and, and we, we've also looked at other councils as well.
Can I, can I just summarise, as I understand from the report, this is purely a compliance and regulatory change to the agreement that was in place, that the Financial Markets Authority has indicated some changes are required and Simpson-Greerson have looked at our original agreement with LGFA and they've said these, this is what needs to change in order to make it now compliant with Financial Markets Act and that's essentially what's been done?
That, that's the main part is the Financial Markets Conduct Act. There's also been, um, some, some improvements made to the processes and mechanisms under LGFA's deliverables to the sector. And in the sense, they've shortened things up to enable councils to come without the notice periods that councils used to have. So they've, they've improved some elements, that's articulated in here as well. Um, we've certainly seen nothing in there that's added any, uh, anything other than probably, um, um, greater flexibility for councils in being able to use LGFA under those, um, original, um, document, uh, under those original documents. I mean, the original documents when LGFA was set up, they were, they were set up with a, with a fledgling, uh, uh, agency that was set on a purpose in terms of how it was going to run, what it was going to deliver to the sector. Um, with three years on, five and a half billion dollars worth of successful funding to the local government. Um, and they've now made some improvements through that that are being articulated through the new document as well. And those have, those have come through quite, quite clearly with Simpson-Greerson and their, and their points of reference. And, um, from our, from, from our perspective, I mean, we look at these things in an independent fashion because we're advising councils and we're, um, at the outset, um, part of the group in the formation of LGFA. Um, and, and this is, this is essentially just upgrading and updating, um, what you might say is a dated agreement.
Perhaps, Mr. Chair, I can get some comfort from, um, Simpson-Greerson have looked at this, I know on behalf of all of the councils, but in coming to this report and coming to this council, we had our council's best interest here. I, I, I can get some comfort from that, that it's not, you know where I'm going with that?
Yeah. And I guess there's some reliability now on PWC who have reviewed this on behalf of, on behalf of this council. Um, you, I mean, I, I guess that the question around that is that, that as far as you can see, there are no impediments in the new agreement that would be in any way restrictive to Hamilton City Council than we previously enjoyed under the old agreement.
I'm not really concerned about the other councils, I'm concerned about.
No, 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 but I'm, I'm just saying that there's no impediments that we would.
Yeah.
Simpson-Greerson presumably have acted on behalf of, um, of LGFA and the other councils.
And, and, and essentially for the shareholders council group and, um, so everyone's receiving the same advice from, as far as the councils are concerned. Um, and LGFA, um, from, from our perspective, um, we've been asked a question by our council clients and we've said, um, to, to all of them, hey, there's nothing material here and in fact, some of the changes that have been made, whilst some are absolutely necessary because of the Financial Markets Conduct Act, um, adding some clarity around an area that didn't have clarity. Um, that's, that's to protect you more than anything else. The, um, the other changes are actually in your favour, they're giving greater flexibility in being able to, um, access LGFA um, with shorter notice periods than you would normally have had and, um, and able to, um, to, um, to accommodate that.
Does that?
I'm happy with that, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any, any further questions?
I'll ask a question, CFO, what's our proportion of our lending is with, um, this agency?
Brett?
You've got that figure on the top of your head.
It's around about fifty-five percent at the moment.
What's our max in terms of our spread to, to borrow through the agency?
I don't think we had a maximum, uh, I think we had a target at one point of up to eighty percent.
And are we intending to head towards that or keep it about that?
I think, um, given that they provide some of the best rates around, it will continue to rise.
Right, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we'll put the recommendation from management that the report be received and that the committee, in part B, the committee recommends that the changes to the document be approved by council. Assuming that this, this goes to council for approval, doesn't it, from here?
That's correct.
Thank you. Um, so I've got a second to councillor Mallett, any discussion on the motion? Those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried, uh, against, carried. Right, next item, um, next item is item fourteen, which is the update on the IS programme and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, good afternoon, new issue, good afternoon, councillors, the course of the update on the IS programme of work. No recommendations or report for your information. Uh, councillor, knowing that we have Mr. Brent Kendrick here from Rocksoft, who's the director of the Small Mid Market Solutions and Partners Group. Should there be any questions on paragraph seventeen? Otherwise, we'll take the report as written, David will answer any technical questions.
Thank you. Questions from elected members?
I wanted to, um, talk about, um, attachment one. And so this is in response to our request because we've changed to a consumption model contract. Um, so I think I've read this right, that the response to managing or mitigating consumption is based on having more business cases and tighter systems and processes, am I, have I kind of read that right?
The easiest way to understand it is that the existing systems and processes we have in place will be the same tools that we use to manage them. So we have business as usual processes around, um, adding servers, adding data, et cetera. And if there are any above that, then that goes through the business case process to add.
David, is your mic on?
Yes, it is.
Sorry, I've got a cold, so. I was finding it a little bit hard to hear. Can you just move in a little closer to the microphone if that's possible, please?
So the, the business case process adds, will control out adding any significant additional capacity on?
Yeah, no, I, I understand that, but consumption is about existing stuff being used or being used more or in a way that adds costs. So what are we doing about that so that people are, you know, minimising the use of stuff so that we don't have a situation where, you know, we've got uncertainty about the costs because we're consuming more?
So I'm completely comfortable that the tools that we have in place will control consumption. The consumption model is primarily a change in the way that we procure rather than the way that it will change user behaviour.
Okay, so what you're saying then is we're just going to put tighter reins on getting more stuff?
That's correct. Or rather, rather than it being tighter reins, currently if we needed to buy more storage data, for example, we would go out and buy a storage appliance, and I'm using, and to compare, that might be, say, ten terabytes. And then we would consume up against that, incurred the cost upfront, now we can buy as we need it. And we've got, we've got forecasts.
But I'm talking about avoiding even buying it because you're buying it because you're consuming more. So what are we doing about that?
So.
That's about users, plain and simple, on-the-ground users, using the equipment in a way that's minimises, you know, wastage.
So we have a lot of, a lot of tools, a lot of processes in place already that help manage it around data, around, um, so we've got a, a, a document and record management system that has a way of managing it, that means that as, as documents go out of their, um, destruction life cycle, we get rid of them, it goes off the bottom of it. We've got a records management function within, um, the information management, uh, part of IS, who, one of their main tasks is ensuring that we're continually monitoring and, and reducing our consumption of those.
Right. Okay, so in a year's time, if you were to come with a graph showing consumption on a user basis, you're confident that it will either be, be, you know, static or down?
Uh, not necessarily static or down, but it will be within the growth forecast that we've already put in. So every year and for the last X number of years, we've always, it's always increased and we've, we've put that, we'll work that into our budgets to ensure that we're, we're providing enough to allow the business to.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Thank you, any further questions? All right, well, we'll put the recommendation from management that the report be received, I have somebody to move that, please. Thank you, councillor Mallett, seconded, thank you councillor Wilson. Any discussion on the, on the motion? Those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, against, carried. Thank you. Um, next item is the, uh, community occupancy applications for Graham Park and Beetham Park. Welcome Sally Barnes.
Good afternoon.
I'll move when you're ready.
Okay.
My second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the report? Councillor Gallagher.
Just on the kindergarten, um, a transfer, I understand that and obviously because it's the Kindergarten Association, a not-for-profit, it comes under the community leases. It's the least roughly, you've got two other, uh, community organisations, I think, on, you know, adjacent land, that, that's sort of all, all within the criteria?
Yes. Are you saying?
And for a fair, any reason, hypothetically, a not, a non, not, you know, a private for-profit provider came and then it would be just a commercial?
I, yes, it would, it, they wouldn't meet the criteria within the community occupancy policy and this application does and that's why it's in front of you today for consideration.
So business as usual, except that it's one community group being replaced by another one?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Similar to councillor's question here, the Hamilton Childcare, which is in existence at the moment, is that, um, a privately-run childcare facility, is it?
Um, it is also, yes, it is, it's also a non-for-profit organisation, but it is a, um, they are a group on their own where the Waikato Association looks after twenty-nine different kindergartens throughout the Waikato region.
So can you tell me what the Hamilton Childcare people are paying at the current time?
Um, they are currently paying six hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-three cents and that is, um, that is outlined within the report and it also is assessed against the, um, five point six of the policy.
So it's, this is not a matter of a private organisation actually coming in and making that note for there, okay, good, let's go.
All right, so the, um, so the motion is on the table that the report be received and that they can, and that council consents to the transfer from childcare services to Waikato Kindergarten Association and the council approves the variation to clause thirty A of the Riverglade Arches Incorporated License to Occupy at Granton Park. So I have a second for that. Uh, um, uh, is there any discussion or any debate on the motion? Those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried, thank you. Item number sixteen is the, uh, refuse station, uh, refuse transfer station, proposed fee charges.
Yes, sorry, I pointed forward before that, that is, um, and I have had an email discussion with the general manager about, sorry, I have had a general, uh, email discussion with the general manager about this. I have a concern about the process that's been followed by staff here in relation to the press release being put out about this. I realise the press release talked about it being a proposed thing, but nevertheless, I think it's a bad practice and I'd like some comment from probably the chief executive in this respect because it wasn't, um, Mr. Allen's department that issued the press release, um, putting out a press release about these proposed charges well before we actually have this discussion. I have no objection with whatever council decides here being put out in the press release, but we hadn't even, in fact, I hadn't even seen them that time, at that time, it was about the same day that I, um, was downloading it that that came. So I, I just think that it's a poor practice and the chief executive should comment on that, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, through Mr. Chair, thank you councillor Macpherson. Um, actually, I'm going to consider your points because I think there's some validity in that, so I'm, I'm going to sit down so you can hear me on the mic. I'm a little bit too tall, um, I think there's some validity in your concerns and I'm going to look at, look into that, councillor Macpherson. So I can't undo what's done in this case, but, um, I think there's some, uh, um, a need to look at in terms of how we approach some of this stuff in terms of communication and what it looks like in that respect.
Good comment. Just against that, or not against, David.
Just against that, or not against, David, it's part of the debate, how else is the public going to hear, I guess it's late, I mean, but if advice had been given two weeks ago, or a month ago, saying this is what we're considering, give us some response, but...
I take your point, I think it's a different way of doing it, rather than an official press release, in fact, it's been something we've talked about a long time ago, not in the recent past, as a synopsis of the agenda items coming up, being issued, all of them, I mean, why was it done just on this one and not others, you know, the problem is, there's an appearance that it's a fait accompli when that sort of press release comes out, yeah.
Okay, all right, so you wanted to discuss, talk about?
Yes, Chair, in fact, it is fait accompli, and as Councillor McPherson knows, under the contract, that the contractor has that right to increase charges, it's only a courtesy to us, and secondly, if we are unhappy with the charges, we could decide to provide a subsidy, and since I've been on council, there has been no appetite for creating a subsidy for the increase in those fees. I'm slightly different than Councillor McPherson, in that once the agenda is available, it's in the public domain, and the media sometimes choose, I know there was a proactive news release, and it only indicated that it was possible, that no decision had been made, but it doesn't stop the media using those agendas to develop news stories in advance of any discussion by this council, I'm relaxed that the story went in, I'm relaxed that there's the potential for discussion, except we can't change the outcome, other than through subsidy.
Yeah, point of order there, and I did wait until the deputy mayor had finished, we have always had an opportunity to set different fees and charges from that proposed, sure, by way of subsidy, and that has in fact been proposed in the past, it hasn't won, but it makes it more difficult to propose it if it's already been announced in the way that it was, we've always, you know, you cannot say we have no choice, we do have a choice, we may choose not to exercise that alternative, but we have always had that choice, and it's part of the contract.
So Chair, just in response to that, I just would like to know if Councillor McPherson is happy that when an agenda goes out to the media, and therefore in the public, would he expect the communications staff to make absolutely no comment if they had not issued a release, but the media was submitting questions to ask about an issue, so I just need to know whether Councillor McPherson is advocating cutting off that channel of inquiry to the media?
I'd always expect that the communications staff would not make a comment, I would expect that the responsible committee chairs, and perhaps the responsible general managers, might make a comment if they're asked by the media, as has happened in the past, because the communications staff would seem to me not to need to come into play until after a formal body of council has made a decision.
Can I, I'm not going to stand up, apologies, we have a formal process, and that's what I need to look at in terms of this scenario, whereby the agenda setting, each item that's on the agenda is discussed, and whether or not what the media response is in that respect, we just need to make sure that it's a transparent and a proactive discussion, to ensure that the chair and the deputy chair are aware of what media is going to go out in respect to those agenda items, and that's, or not, that case may be, it needs to be a proactive discussion, rather than one done in isolation, and that's the point, even though I didn't say that earlier, and that I'm going to follow up on, make sure that process is working robustly, which I think would satisfy everyone, if we're proactively considering what the impacts are, and the potential outcomes of proactive media, and that's the question.
And in that instance, that didn't happen, so there was no communication back to either the chair or deputy chair as to the release of that, so, point taken, that we will follow that through, so we can go back now to the report, take the report as read, I think everyone's read it, or read the? Yeah, look, I'm happy to take the report as read, and myself and Myrie can answer any questions. Yes, Councillor Gallagher.
So all we're required to do is rubber stamp.
No, 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 we're having questions, and then we will follow.
Then we rubber stamp.
Questions with the debate, and then following the debate, we will vote.
Debate on what?
The debate on whether we agree to increase the fees that are being charged, to pass on the increased fees that are being charged to members of the public who use the refuse station.
So Chair, Councillor Gallagher does have an opportunity to move a resolution to move a subsidy on those charges, if he wishes to do that.
Yeah, but we don't really.
Through you, Mr Chair, perhaps I could just be clear on that, like, we have a lease arrangement with the operator of the site, it's his domain to set the fees, and he's providing that advice to us out of the courtesy, but the lease does require it to come back to council, and give council an opportunity to subsidise those fees if it wishes, so it's not rubber stamping, but it is, it is the, it's an operator working in the marketplace, just advising of fee increases. So our decision, or council's decision, is, as said out in the report, whether it wants to provide a subsidy to keep those costs down.
So, okay, so it's receiving information, and we only have one option, this is not the time and place, I certainly look forward, as we evolve, the discussion around the recycling and the ten-year plan proposals, albeit there was ongoing robust discussion around that, you know, around to what degree the refuse transfer station is performing a useful mechanism to receive waste, et cetera, et cetera, and I've read the report around, you know, if you put the charges up, you go after the green people down the road, but my own view is particularly an angst, if you like, about the cost of a trailer, and I'll be quite interested as an action list, that we actually just, while you've done the regional sort of roundup, I don't know if there's any other local authority in New Zealand or Australia who's actually focused a wee bit on encouraging, you know, this is around the litter issue and the dumping stuff, around about, you know, the trailer charge and whatever, because to me it does seem, that one seems a bit excessive, but apart from that, I think that's a sort of a longer-term discussion about where does the RTS fit in the issue around, you know, of our comprehensive recycling strategy, and also our rubbish litter minimisation.
Yeah, sorry, you want to answer that, or?
Look, I think councillor's clearly right, the opportunity is coming up as we move forward into our next contract, so that's the opportunity to look at the lease and a whole range of things, so clearly an opportunity is not far away for council to look at that.
But what I would welcome, obviously, and I'm sure you'll do this, is that is discussed as part of the whole, so part of the whole is the waste minimisation, the recycling process, but also looking at urban amenity in that, what else do we have to do to reduce the chances of the incredible street litter that we get in the city, particularly in the high-density area? Now, I don't want to go totally off point, but I'm making a point that those of us who have gone around, say, the university precinct and other high-density areas in Hamilton East, for example, for Diora, you know, we do have a significant problem of our staff having to come back into the play and clean up stuff and all of that, I'm not sure whether reducing, say, a trailer charge, to be honest, is necessarily going to make any difference to that, but I would really welcome that when we have the conversation, we don't just talk about the terms of lease with the people running the refuse transfer plant, you know, we have the totality of a discussion.
Councillor McPherson?
Yeah. Following, following the point by Councillor Gallagher, I would say, by way of introduction, that we don't have a comprehensive recycling or waste minimisation strategy at the moment that's worth any paper that it might be printed on, even if it's electronic to save paper, because we don't have control over two of the key elements in that, which is the price to go to the rubbish dump, and the price to go to the, comparatively speaking, the price to go to the organic recycling centre, unless you have control over those areas, you can't have a comprehensive policy, almost by definition, so I very much hope that any contract in the future takes account of that, that's the first thing, the second thing in terms of lack of plan, is that every year, it seems to me, and I might be understating the case here, we get a knee-jerk proposal for a fee increase in this area, which we've had no warning about beforehand, but we know, if we've been around for long enough, it's just going to come up every year, there's no plan, there's no looking forward, this is where it's going to go to, this is the relativity it's going to keep with the other, with the organic recycling, or with private sector providers, things like that, so, you know, in this area, I might even agree with Councillor Mallett, price is very important in terms of what gets recycled, what doesn't get recycled, what gets dumped, et cetera, and I think that we're sort of being poorly served in this area by not having a plan that includes pricing, even if it's their pricing, saying that this is what we expect to do over the next five years, and this is how we're going to factor it in, what I would like to see in this information, and there is one thing, there are some relativities with other centres, but not with our organic recycling centre, there's a comment in here that it's going to make the relativity better, but my experience is that almost every time we've had a fee increase at the RTS, that's been followed a month, or two, or three later by a fee increase at the organic recycling centre, and they're just hooking on the back of that, why wouldn't you, because they only have to keep a relativity, it doesn't matter, you know, it's just, it's not planning, it's not public planning, it's very, very poor planning, full stop, and I get frustrated whenever I see this sort of thing come up, because we have very little choice other than to, other than to provide a subsidy, which we haven't budgeted for, this comes up far too late in the cycle for us to really contemplate a budget, you know, putting in a budget for that if we were mindful to, so it is a waste of time in the sense that Councillor Gallagher's talking about, I'm going to vote against this fee increase, and people say, oh, but you can't, because we have a contract, I'm sorry, if we're going to do our fees and charges in this area differently, well, tough, you know, I'm not going to support it being done that way, we, our staff should be going to the organic, to the revenue transfer station and the organic recycling centre operators when we're doing the rest of our fees and charges, that's what ratepayers would expect, so that it's, even if it's their charge, at least it's put in the list and looked at in conjunction with all of the others, and those two are looked at together, so it's just a, it's a poor exercise all round, it leaves me cold, every year it comes up, I would like also to see some facts and figures, not just about the fee increase for this year relative to last year, but what about, what's been the movement over the last ten years or the last five years, we've got those figures, and then we can see whether things are out of kilter or not in our mind, we've got no way of telling with this sort of information.
Okay, Dave, I'm just saying, just getting back to that thing about an action list, you're just throwing out a whole thing, which are great, but our mate down the end here won't have taken all those down, so you just need to give her, what do you want? We've got?
All of it.
Yeah, yeah, the whole lot, you just check the TV.
Councillor McPherson has asked us to consider requesting the contract to provide their fees, or proposed fees and charges at the same time that we prepare ours, that would be subject to what's actually in the contract, but I'm sure we can pass that request on, and the second one is that next year, when this paper comes up, there is a five-year comparison as well.
Are you assuming there is one next year, so it's all just assumed now?
Well, the contract's got?
It's a contract.
Yeah, the contract runs through?
It's not an annual thing necessarily, is it?
There is a long-term contract, it's a procedure.
Why was it tied in with the rest of our finance work?
Well, ask the council.
Yeah, it's a contract, we're just following.
I'm asking the infrastructure manager.
Clause by clause, the contract that we signed a long time ago, it was a long-term contract that we entered into, sets out the process that we're following now, I do take all of those points, and we do have the opportunity to look at a lot of those, we've written down a lot of those, Councillor McPherson, I think, for the next review of the contract, which is upon us within a year or so, but we are just following the process that council has entered into in two thousand and seven, I think, the particular lease agreement that we're looking at here, so it is a well-set-out process of, that we're following.
You were around them in two thousand and seven, weren't you?
No, I wasn't, I was, but not here, very close to that, the five, the, over, the year-by-year trend, that's something we can certainly do and can provide.
Surely we can go to them on the timing issue as well, I mean, they don't have to agree, we can at least ask, so it fits in.
We can certainly work with them and try and work with them voluntary to do something a bit better than that, yes.
Well, we have only one more review anyway, won't we, because if the contract expires in two thousand and seventeen, there's going to be another one next year, and that'll be the last one in this, in this contract period.
But we still don't have a realistic opportunity now, because we've already done the budget, the draft budget.
Appreciate that, yeah, good. Councillor Chesterman?
Yes, thanks, Chair, look, I agree with Councillor McPherson on the timing aspect, but I disagree with him in voting against the proposal on the basis it's a contractual obligation, and the opportunity to have the debate is before the contract comes up for renewal, and that should form part of that discussion.
Thank you. All right, so we'll put the motion.
Just one other, maybe a comment, Mr Chairman, I can't, and we can't do anything about it, I realise that, but you know, for a three-hundred-kg ute, you get it at five bucks cheaper than a three-hundred-kg trailer, which doesn't make much sense to me, when you look at the pricing and the, I don't know whether there's been an increase in the landfill up at Spring Hill, is it? Oh, okay, because I was thinking the fuel costs and that reducing, and it all been counted to there, I would have thought it would have been coming down, not going up, but if there's been an increase in the landfill.
When have prices ever come down?
Fuel's come, Dave.
So the cost of disposal at Hampton Downs has increased approximately by three-and-a-half per cent on an annual basis over the last two years.
We're on behind our rates then. We only put our rates at three-and-a-half, three-and-a-half per cent.
Okay, so I take it that, I mean, you've got, they have presented to us the reasons why the justification for the price increase.
Yeah, it's something that we do, we look at the price increases, and we drill down to ask what's driving it, and satisfy ourselves that there's factors and then reasons for driving those prices increases.
All right, so put the recommendation from management under paragraph ten, that the report be received, and that we proceed with the, allow the increased fees without council offering a subsidy, so do I have a move before that, please? Councillor Mallett, seconded, Deputy Mayor Chesterman, any discussion on the motion? Those in favour, please say aye. Aye against?
No.
No, show of hands.
Okay, show of hands.
Don't be recorded.
Those in favour, please, those in favour, please raise their hands, those in favour.
Councilors Tooman, Green, King, O'Leary, Yong, Chesterman, Mallett, and the chairman.
Those against?
Councilors Gallagher, McPherson, and Wilson.
Thank you.
Very close vote.
Motion carried. Okay, it's probably a good opportunity, a good opportunity now to have a cup of tea before we resume, if we could be back here at four fifteen for the public-excluded?
Just while we're in public, I just want to, did we confirm in the agenda, and I apologise, under the items, section forty-eight, that we're moving in public to move, you know, we've done that, we've moved this resolution?
We have moved.
Yeah, well, obviously we need to just, in the public section, before they turn off the television cameras, the cameras, like the cameras in here now, actually, are we just confirming that we are receiving a update report with regard to the tyre issue?
And is that going to be in public or privately, because that's not been clear, and I've asked for it in public, so.
So, can I put that, so on the meeting next week, so at the council meeting next week, there'll be an open report, the tyres, percent of that report at that meeting.
And no payments will be made in the meantime?
No payments will be made till that report has gone through, as discussed with some councillors previously.
Thank you.
Can I ask that that intervention, just under agenda clarification, as we are dealing with descriptive minutes, and the advice of the CEO, the updated advice of the CEO, be noted in these minutes, please?
Well, they have been, because the meeting hasn't been closed, it's still in the open.
We're still in the open.
No, but I might, just purely as a request to the committee secretariat, with the leave of the chair, that as we do descriptive minutes, is the advice we've received from the CEO just be noted as formed?
The advice, advices, at the 28th of May, council meeting, there will be a report on the practice of the site employees in the open session, and no more payments will be made until the end of the year.
Thank you, thank you.
All right.
Just one more, and I might have missed this, Mr Chairman. The Riverglades Arches variation, did we approve that?
Yes, we did.
Oh, we did? I must have missed it.
So, I'll move, we move into...
Second, Mr Chair.
Thank you, all right. And let's get back here at 4:15 if we can, for the, for the public-excluded portion.